Welcome to the Tuesday, July 18th Regular City Council Meeting. Would you please all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll tell you, roll call, please.
Bergman?
Here.
Siebel?
Here.
Osborn?
Here.
Smock?
Here.
Nichols?
I hope so. You look physically here. I will have a motion for number four, approval of the July 18th, 2023 Agenda, please.
So move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public discussion. Anyone from the audience may come up to the podium, state their name, state their address, and state any concerns that they may have.
I'm Vanessa Gilson. I live on Morale. We have a problem on Morale River Forest about the parking. There's been a lot of people that's almost been hit. They stop on River Forest. Sometimes they even block the driveway, the side block on River Forest.
Okay.
So a lot of times you have to stop on River Forest if there's a car coming. And that's not good stopping on River Forest.
Right.
So I was gonna see if we could get a sign maybe up to their mailbox so they can't park on that side.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. And it's the house that's on the south corner, right?
Yep.
Absolutely. We'll check into that right away.
Also, I want to, I was wondering about the holes in front of our driveway.
Okay.
They cleaned them out, but they never filled them back in. They filled in the neighbors', but not ours.
What road, Ms. Gilson?
Morale.
Morale, okay.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else would like to speak tonight?
Carrie Fleming. I live on East End Avenue. I was just wondering about speed humps on like the side roads where it's 25 miles an hour. It's, the speeders are horrible in Evansdale. It doesn't matter where you live, they, they're crazy. I'm afraid a kid's gonna get hit. We have a kid next door who's autistic. I mean, it's bad here. It is really horrible. It seems like nothing is ever being done. So I don't know if it was an option to get speed humps or bumps on some of the side roads.
What address are you, Mrs. Fleming?
233. Right on the curve of errors.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I mean, they go as fast as they can around that curve.
Yeah, I understand. We have a lot of issues and, you know, some of them we are addressing. Like around the schools and stuff like that, we are addressing. I mean, that can be an item for consideration. It's really, really difficult to snowplow.
Oh, I get that. Yeah, I mean, I understand.
You know, it's like very difficult. So I mean, you know, I don't know if council wants to consider. I've had other requests for putting speed bumps. I don't know if something council wants to consider. I mean, it's not on the agenda for any kind of approval, but it doesn't mean we can't put it on an agenda and consider.
I know Elk Run had some temporary ones that they have in, but they could take them out in the wintertime so they could plow the streets.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's an option.
And our speed signs have been stationary now for close, coming up on a year. Time to cycle them around a little bit.
The speed signs?
Mm-hmm. The solar ones.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The radar signs.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there one working on Grand? I mean, on Gilbert?
No, it's not. Matter of fact, we're, we're in the process of trying to see if we can return it because we've had a lot of problems with it. It just...
Doesn't hold charge or something?
It's not even that. It's like Chris actually has to go in there and physically reset it. So that's gonna be a warranty item. That's, that's a thought, is to get, we have that speed sign. I don't know if you've seen it around town. Right now, it's on Roosevelt. It has been on River Forest. We had it on Evans for a time. It's a mobile. I mean, it can go anywhere in this city, and it records data.
Honestly, personally, I don't pay attention to those because...
Okay.
You know, I just don't. Yeah, I mean, they're there, but...
I mean, it's a flashing, you know, sign. It actually records the data and lets our police department know exactly what's going on, if there's certain times a day that are worse than others.
Sure.
It really does.
Okay.
So that's a good, good thought, Justin.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Carrie.
Yep.
Anyone else this evening? Okay. Moving on to item six, discussion, Jason Hines. He is with Terracan regarding the Community Response Center. We reached out to Terracan after the council meeting, you know, discussing the clay that is below the Community Response Center, if that could be an option, you know, of, you know, maybe poking through that clay and, and, you know, so it would start releasing the water. So I reached out to Terracan. They've had, you know, they've done quite a bit of work in our city. They weren't actually the, when we built the Community Response Center, they weren't actually the testing company that was hired. However, we had all that information that we were able to send over to them for review. So he has a presentation for you. I'll turn down the light. Can you see it?
Yeah, I think that one works still, so yeah, you can...
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for having me. I'm just gonna, as the mayor described, I'm just gonna talk about the little bit of research that I did for the area and share a little experience that I have in the 27 years that I've been a consultant in Wisconsin and Iowa and the projects around the country. I have done dewatering designs for structures and pits and railroad crossings and things, so I'm pretty familiar with what it takes to, to deal with some of these problems and troubleshoot them. So... We understand just on a, a general basis that you all have had water in your, in your building, and it's been more, more than just one occurrence from the historic flooding. I, I understand it's happened since then. And I've got a bullet there that just lists a, it's a short list of some causes that, you know, we've seen in the past can contribute to groundwater accumulation in below-grade areas of buildings. Sometimes the problems are man-made and other times it's, it's Mother Nature that does it. We understand there's a membrane system potentially under the building floor and also around the walls. I personally have not reviewed the plans. I would need to do that to be able to speak in detail on that. So having spoke with the mayor and a coworker of mine who visited the site, it does sound like there has been some documentation, but we potentially could look at things in a little bit more detail and maybe go through a checklist of things to see if, if anything or more than one cause is, is contributing to the problem that you're having intermittently in your basement. That's just the, the location of it. It's just the aerial of the property and the general layout. Sure you're all familiar with it. So your building that you have is situated in what we could just generally refer to as an oxbow of the Cedar River. Rivers experience, in their life cycle, their lifespan, they, it's referred to as morphology. Rivers and streams and things, their courses change over time. And so your site is within an oxbow of the river. And so the bottom western part would be referred to as the Cut Bank. And over time, it, it's moved further and further to the west. And as it does that, the river deposits on the inside. And so it'll deposit sand and silt. And so it's just the aerial of the situation at a rather high elevation of where your building sits. So more or less what I'm kind of getting at is that it's likely that there's a fairly large sand depositor, an aquifer, that the building is positioned within. So to just prepare for this or do a little bit of research, I, I am familiar with the area. I've done work on both sides of the river and the highways and the bridges and things over the, the river. It, it's a little bit hard to see, but there's dots on this map, both to the northwest and to the northeast. The northeast red dot and green dot are in close proximity to the subject property. And so what I did just to gather more information, besides just the boring logs that I have at the site, is just to check, you know, how big or how wide the aquifer could be in our immediate vicinity. And so I went to the Geosam website, which is a website that you can look at well logs across Iowa, and it's free to the public. The first well log that I saw, this is the, the log that's very close to the property. It's just kitty corner to the northeast. It's a little bit difficult to read perhaps, but on your handout, you can see there's a handwritten log down there that has drift, sand, and blue clay. And this log that was drilled, you know, years ago is basically saying there's five feet of clay, followed by 25 feet of sand, followed by, from 30 to 89, followed by almost 60 feet thick layer of clay. And then it goes down into another, a lower sand layer and another clay layer. And then you get into the Cedar Valley Formation or the Wapsey. I think some of them refer to it. So this, this particular log is showing that northeast of your site, a block or two, there's a deposit of sand that's about 25 feet thick, and it's over about 60 feet of clay. Another part of this is that that well is actually set in the lower sand strata at 114. And if you went to the website, you could scroll down, and you could see that they were able to pump 200 gallons a minute out of that lower sand strata. And it, it didn't pump the well dry. So it's a, it's a high-capacity well. The other log that I, I found is, is to the northwest. This is not as good a log, but just on the bottom, it's, it's the very small print on the bottom. That says there's 30 feet of sand. And then they say grade drift, and that's only about 15 feet thick. In grade drift, people say drift, it's, they use it interchangeably sometimes with clay. It's a geologic term. I would interpret it to be clay. And then they have at a relatively shallow depth of about, I believe it's 45 feet, they have the, the rock, okay? So it's, it's apparent from the logs I'll show you next, in those two well logs, that there's a fair amount of sand there, and the building probably sits in, it sits in a sand aquifer. We would refer to it generically. Not necessarily an aquifer that you would think, I'm gonna get all my drinking water from. And you would ju, you could potentially set a shallow well in it. It may be not productive at times, but... So at the site too, these borings were done for the building, for foundation design, and amongst other things that the report was intended for. So in 20, the borings done by the other firm, they only went to 20 feet, which is normal for borings for a building. But that also shows sand, and they terminated in sand. And it was a profile more or less of clay over sand. And you can see back then that the groundwater was about 10 feet from the ground surface. So the sand is, is bearing water. It was bearing water in the 50s. It was bearing water when you built the building. It, it likely bears water most of the time unless we're in, you know, drought, you know, severe drought. And, and it may even bear water during drought. It'd just be lower than what's indicated there. I just put this slide in for your reference. It's just some of our experiences with projects that we've, we've worked on. It's about wells. It's, you can just read it at your leisure. And if you have questions, you know, later, that, that would be fine to ask about it. But I, I more or less just put that, put that in there to give you an idea of what a well can do. And so if you have a sump pump in a basement, it, it can't do that because a lot of wells are, they're submerged more significantly than a sump pump. So if the sump pump is only fi, five feet deep, it can't lower the groundwater right at the sump pump more than five feet below the floor. So then 30 feet away from you, the groundwater could very well be back at the level that it is everywhere else around the sump pump. So it has a very limited capability of keeping water low in the event that you do have a high groundwater condition. So this is what we would suggest for your, to consider. These are steps that we look at when we're trying to troubleshoot a wet basement with water problems. We don't like to make assumptions right off the bat. It's good practice to consider other things that can contribute to, to water problems. Because one thing you don't want to do is have good intentions of fixing the problem and introduce one particular solution and then still have a water problem because you didn't actually rectify the second or third contributing problem that you may not have noticed. We, you can't have more than one contributing factor. So you can, again, you know, read this at your leisure, but these are the, kind of the bullets and the subbullets that are common when you're looking at water issues in lower levels in particular. So... That is short, sweet to the end. If the mayor wishes to, I can answer or clarify that. I know that's very short and direct.
Yeah, if you have any questions.
But I didn't want to take up a lot of time.
Feel free.
Jason, I have, I have, I'm sorry. Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
The question I have, I mean, I don't think any of us really know the story, but we've been told by different entities in the town that the retention pond, which is Myers Lake, has a lot to do with the water issue at the CRC. And it's from people that are educated as well as laymen's trying to come up with an answer. And I've been told, the, I've been told a lot of stories about the building's membrane, whether there is one, whether it's torn, whether there wasn't one. Nobody seems to have that kind of documentation where you can go, okay, we can X that off because we know that's non-existent, and then go to the next thing. So my question to you is, I understand what you're saying in action items, but do you have any thought to, like, some kind of just gunshot thought right now? What do you think could be done? Does the retention pond at Myers Lake have, in your opinion, professional opinion, have something to do with the water level with the sump pumps at the CRC? And the up and down when we have wet area, it's worse? I mean, I think that's what we're really trying to get to. What, what's really going on? Is there a similarity between the two, or is there nothing to do with one? That's my big concern.
One of the things, oh, sorry. One of the things that would be beneficial, just as background information, is if you were to install maybe two observation wells at the building site, okay? To give you a record of how the groundwater at the site changes or reacts to the river level. And perhaps Myers Lake, although I'm sure that's controlled with an outlet.
Yeah, it has one hundred, yeah.
Yeah, so that's one thing to, to look at. And, and that gives you an indication of, you know, obviously, the river is going to have an influence on the groundwater level in that oxbow. I had heard in informal discussions that short-term precipitation events had an impact on the basement, but that was an informal conversation. I'm, I'm not certain of that. So that Myers Lake, for the size of this aquifer, it, I, I mean, and I'm not sure if you're feeding that to keep it at that level continually. I haven't researched how you all maintain...
Well, it's, it's rain runoff, isn't it?
Yeah, stormwater runoff.
Stormwater runoff.
I mean, for, for me, in the geologic setting, I, I don't know that I would blame necessarily a pond of that size when you consider the size of the aquifer that we're in early. I, I don't know that I would off the bat conclude that Myers Lake is the source of the, the groundwater problem.
Because I had a previous, the mayor visited within too, unless you wanted to be... That, I was told the other day, this week, that if we were to put a mark in the CRC where the water level is in the pumps, in the holes, and then go over and lower Myers Lake by six inches, where I guess Chris, they would know how to go down six inches, and then go back and see where your mark changes in the CRC basement. I'm just searching for answers. Like, people are telling us a lot of stuff. So I'm just searching, does that have any sense to you? Do you think that's a waste of time to wa? It would take, it would depend on the precipitation, what's going on also. But to give you a heads up, did that have effect on the level in the CRC? Or did it have no effect going down six inches and waiting a day or two? You'd have to wait a day or two to really see it, or maybe in a week and see what that level would be.
Probably longer than that, I would wait.
See what that level, if that would do something. And then have, if, if that was a workable deal, then work at keeping that lake, that pond at, down at that level because we know there's a benefit in the CRC basement.
I mean, the, the CRC would in theory be side gradient or up gradient from the pond, meaning it's, the water comes from the north and it generally moves to the southeast. So you're above the lake, okay? So that, that would be like a backfilling effect that the lake is having potentially. So I mean, there are many, many things when you're trying to put your hands around what the actual problem is. And there's, oftentimes, there's a lot of variables. So if you wanted to use your CROC that's in the basement as an indicator, one certainly could. But, you know, I, I'm not sure as a consultant that I would recommend, that a recommendation to the city would be to lower Myers Lake and then monitor the sump pump. I, I don't know that I would recommend that. That wouldn't be the first thing that I would recommend. I'll say that.
That used to be a swamp. It had water. In fact, we used to ice skate down there. And I live just a block from the Response Center, which I've got, my basement is completely dry. And in fact, I've got no problem with it. But I had my own well before they put the city sewer in. And I had my own well, and it had, was probably not even four or five foot under the floor, and that was, had four foot of water in it. When they put the city sanitary sewer in, they broke through that blue clay and everything. I had to put in city water. Everything dried up. But the, the property that this Response Center is built on was a slough.
Yeah.
And the city dump is under, well, Brookside and Bellfontaine. And I'm saying if you could have a way to break through that blue clay, there's different layers over there, I understand, in there, and that would eliminate some of the problem. Because when they broke it down by my house, everything disappeared. My basement is, it couldn't be any drier than what this floor is. I never get any marks during there. That was...
Yeah, so, I mean, if you all were interested in, in pursuing that concept of taking surface water that you have in an upper sand layer and draining it to a lower sand layer.
Yeah, you wouldn't have to go, you'd probably get different layers of blue clay if you could get through the upper ones.
Yeah. So, right, so you have a concept there. But I mean, unless you were to, as I showed the logs for the building, we don't really have information that would support that as even being an alternative. So, I mean, unless we know what's there at our site, you know, we, we would need to know and have deeper borings at the site because like you mentioned, Mr. Nichols, with the slough and the mayor, and I had seen it in historical topoes, the site, the situation of the site is such that it, it, it does have the potential to collect water more locally. So, but I, I understand your concept. That has, that can be done. And I've done that in construction when you, you know, put fill on top of topsoil, and they use sand, and then the, the building bathtubs. Well, you can, if you make penetrations, it allows the site to drain. So I understand your concept fully. But we just don't have the information at that site to really know if that's even a possibility.
Well, what I would do is, mine, I would dig down to the level of the basement floor, then go another five or six foot of below that. And if there's blue clay, break through that, then it would probably alleviate the upper water.
Well, yeah, but the borings that were done, were done to 20 feet. And so that's, should be below the level of the basement that's there now. So, I mean, that would be a, a pretty destructive hole. I mean, in particular in the basement, but it would be a, a really deep hole potentially outside too, whereas a boring, you know, just like this big. And you can go to 50 feet. You can drill all the way through the clay hole if you want, and you won't really have any disturbance, and you can do that in a couple spots. And, and then you can give yourself a profile, you know, of the area, and you, you can see what you have.
It doesn't do no good to drill a hole that big and think it's gonna drain. You have to have a large area. And I thought that maybe you could take a backhoe down there and dig down 20 feet and see what happens.
If you were to attempt that and say the groundwater right now is at 12 or 14 feet, it's very difficult to take a backhoe and dig underwater and sand because it just flows back in. So that could be a consideration.
Well, that's what happened in front of my house. They dug the sanitary sewer in front of my house. It's probably 15, 16 feet deep through the horse mane that goes through there. And that's when they broke through the blue clay, and then it just dried my well up overnight. It was gone. I haven't had any problem with water anyplace. My basement's as dry as the first floor, so...
Sure. Yeah, and, and I'll just reiterate. I mean, unless we have information that's deep enough at a site, I mean, we really, you know, can't speak to that potential remedy. I mean, we really, you know, can't speak to that, uh, potential remedy. I mean, we would re- we would really want to know what's there, uh, on multiple sides of the structure before I personally would sign off with my stamp and say that that's a solution for the site. So, I mean, I, I would wanna know what's there.
So by information and knowing what's there, what would that be? More bore holes right around the CRC site?
Yes, yeah, that's what I'd do.
Okay, I guess that's kind of what the council needs to get to is, what's the first step if we're gonna pursue this?
And the cost.
And the cost, what's it gonna cost for all this?
Well, I mean, you know, so we'll, we'll drill some holes and see what it looks like. And then you'll have a better idea of what the cost is, I suppose.
In addition to that, we would probably look at some of the, the gathering of information and things. And you could do more interviews and we could look at the plans. That would be, that would coincide with that. But yeah, the borings, uh, to me, if, when you're doing a boring, then too, you might as well put in a groundwater well so that you can, and something that's very tidy, can be mowed over. You can look at the groundwater level, uh, in a triangular pattern and you can actually see how it responds. I mean, that's a suggestion, but certainly we would want to have borings done to just ground zero, just to get started.
So a groundwater well is a big hole in the ground? Or do you have?
A foot or less, twelve inch or less.
Wide, you mean?
In diameter, or circle, yeah.
And then do you put piping down there or what do you put?
Yeah, it hits a pipe and it has a pump. There's different systems, some well systems share a vacuum or a water circulation or pumping system. Uh, high-capacity wells use, uh, most often they have their, a dedicated pump for the, the pipe.
And, don't quote me on this, Jason, but aren't they doing the same thing at the wastewater treatment plant right now?
Dewatering?
Yeah, is it similar to what he's explaining?
Somewhat.
Okay.
More for like a monetary, would this be continual to like dewatering situations? Like in the future? Or more just for initial where we at?
So the first step, if we were to put in observation wells, there's no pump or anything there. It's just a screen and a riser pipe. And you just lower an electronic device and it tells you when it's beep. So you can see the elevate, you can calculate the elevation of the water.
Okay.
If the, if the solution is to not touch the building and just from an exterior manner actively be able to lower water, then the wells that you would install are permanent. And they can be automatic, uh, connected to a telephone system, a number of things. But they're, they're permanent. I mean, and they would need to be maintained and checked and operated on purpose occasionally.
Okay.
You could pump it down and put a splash pad down there for the kids.
Why don't we, Nate?
Unfortunately, it's not clean water, cause there was a dump there, like you said.
Well, I drank it for how many years and I'm still here.
No, that's down lower than that, right? The, the aquifer where we drink from is lower than that. It's below that forty feet.
It's in the hundred.
It's in the hundred and some feet.
This town was first heard, I think, with sand points. I mean, they were down.
That makes sense. Sand points.
That's what we had.
I think at this point, this has been a very good discussion, that we will, um, maybe get some ideas from you, have a little bit more conversation and put something together cost-wise for the council to review. Yep. Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
We really appreciate you attending and gathering all this information for us. It's been very helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, number seven, wastewater treatment plant update by Heath Drager with People Service.
Busy. Did they get a copy of, and the pictures and everything?
Yeah.
Yep, that was in the packet.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, the weather's been fairly well thus far.
Yeah.
For the construction of the site. The big thing initially is the, the berm that they're building around the, the site forever. If there's any, um, future flooding and then the dewatering, like that was mentioned earlier, which was a big task. And, uh, currently outside of that, uh, you can see in the pictures, um, they've predominantly been working on the rebar and the foundation for the UV building as well as, um, the headworks building. So, kinda looks like a war zone right now. It is, it is a mess, but it is coming together. And, um, so far, um, everything is going well. Outside of that, um, there has been some recent RAS pump issues that was not included in the project. So Mike's been dealing with that. That will be addressing probably at the next meeting on quotes for repairs.
Okay.
Um, and then the Michigan lift station will be getting kicked off more than likely in September.
Oh, really?
So, um.
It got pushed back again?
Well, EP said that Denver Underground is still waiting on the MCC. And I believe they have the pumps, so.
Oh, wow.
Anyways, it's, it's coming. So we, we, we have had some pump issues there, but we do have one left. So we are keeping our fingers crossed that everything keeps running smooth. But, uh, thrilled with the prog- progress that, um, everybody's making.
Yes.
So on the plant.
Yeah.
Other than that, I think that is pretty much we have for an update at this point. Um, also EP is gonna be providing, uh, annual lift station agreement. What we discussed with Brian Frost.
Right.
At the next council meeting, we can be looking forward to, um, reviewing that. And I think that, I think that is it right now. So the RAS pump, we'll have more on next month. Michigan lift station as well.
Okay. And that RAS pump he has talked about, is that the plant that I did email you on? That, um, needs to be pulled and, and, um, possibly repaired, possibly replaced?
Yes.
Because it is a pump from two thousand and two.
We didn't address it because they, I mean, quite frankly, they were running fine and they looked like in good shape. So I mean, that is the reason why we did not include any of those RAS pumps in the current project.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, who would've known there from two thousand and two?
Right, they looked good, so.
Yeah, right.
Absolutely, so.
So Heath, is there, is the road, there was conversation, is the road gonna raise up going to the sewer plant?
Yes, my understanding is that it will ra- be raised. As far as how much, I'm not quite sure exactly, but I can get that information to you.
I just had some people ask me and I don't really know what, I mean, I know, I knew there was conversation in the get-go that it was gonna go up. Is it gonna go up a foot, three feet?
I don't know, I can, I'll get back to you and see how.
All right, thanks Heath.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you. I appreciate you stopping by. Do you guys have any questions for him? Anyone, council?
I don't know.
Okay. Thank you again, Jason. Thank you, Heath. Moving right along, we have, uh, number eight is Hawkeye Alarm, uh, kind of a question and answer, um, conversation with Ross Samick.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ross.
My name is Ross, uh, Samick with Hawkeye Alarm. And the mayor has invited me to come answer some questions you guys might have about electronic or physical security for the city hall building here or in the library and, uh, some concerns you guys might have. So is there anything specific that, uh, you guys are looking for? Or an issue that occurred that has prompted the discussion or anything like that, or?
I was just looking for the security and safety at the hallways and the doors on the outside.
Sure.
That was my only why intervene talking about it. I think it's something that's needed and we just need to know what kind, what would be the cost to have a complete thing done and go. That's basically it, right?
So like a video surveillance, just kind of o- observation type thing?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, cause we, we have several different systems, including the, the video cameras and surveillance, which kinda, uh, give you the eye in the sky, watch everything that is happening. Um, sometimes that's more of a retroactive solution to watch kinda what happened after the fact or be able to support a story, something like that. Um, you also have a more proactive situ- uh, solution, which would be like an intrusion alarm that could tie into like a, uh, duress button system that can operate when, you know, open during business hours and have that, that personal panic duress, uh, device that would be, uh, you know, get the attention of the police or authorities quicker than, you know, having to go back and review video of, of what happened after the fact. Um, you combine those types of things and you get kind of a layered security approach that not only do you have something in case something happens immediately, but then you can go back and, and review that situation or find evidence, uh, to support it. So, um, then you also have, you know, your physical door where you have key fob entry and you can control and, uh, time the openings or allow only certain people through, you know, with a video intercom type solution. So, um, lots of different approaches and so, you know, kinda just the, the general security solution. You know, what we recommend is, you know, the, the cameras are also a great deterrent. You can capture everything inside and outside. But then combine that with something that, uh, you know, the burglar alarm system that can be armed at night. I don't know if there's any cash or anything that's kept here from, uh, receiving bill payments or anything like that. Um, or any.
Minimal.
Minimal, okay. A- a- and, and those are just, you know, types of things. You may be put a motion detector by the vault or something like that for twen- after-hours protection. So, um, no, and I've gotten a, a basic quote for video security to the mayor here. So unless there's something more specific that was really intended, uh, you know, specific situation that we really need to dial into, um, you know, the surveillance, the cameras is a great way to start and then kinda expand off of that down the road too, so.
So your quote is just for video surveillance currently?
Just the video surveillance, correct, yep.
And that was at the entryways, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, just the, the common, uh, public entries, nothing in the hallways or office area, anything like that.
Or parking lot, correct?
I, yeah, I gave some options for the exterior parking.
Was there some external?
Yeah, that's, when you get into the outside cameras, that can really kinda, uh, drive up the costs, uh, with the materials and labor needed. And so keeping, starting out with the interior protection, um, is a good place to start. And then, uh, the systems that we provide are always expandable. And so, um, an eight-channel unit, you start off with three or four cameras inside. You can expand to three or four cameras outside next budget or, you know, however it applies, so. You're not stuck in one size fits all, so.
So are you working on quotes to kinda look at and decide, talk, or?
He had actually did a quote, but it was more like, I was more like hearing what we were gonna do. So that was why I reached out to him a couple of weeks ago. And then finally, we did get in contact with each other to just see what, you know, which direction we were gonna go. That was more or less, uh, I think the.
Yeah, and then I wanted to hear from you guys if there was any specific concerns, you know, that, um, I, I can build a video system to, to watch the doors, but you know, if this was, uh, other area that was meant to be observed or really the parking lot was the focus, you know, that's where the incidents happened, something like that, then, you know, where to train our attention to. So what we are quoting is delivering what everyone needs, so.
Well, like I said, my, my input would be a one of five is at the doorway, hallways, outside, front and back. I guess the library would have to have it too then, I guess, right? Yeah, that's what I'm looking at for a kind of a quote. In general, I don't need the vi- the audio, I don't think that's really necessary.
No, audio gets a little tricky. Um, it has to be well posted and notified, um, that audio recording is going, is taking place. Definitely a little bit more liability in, in that aspect. So, um, that would be a, a very specific thing that we'd have to kinda narrow down and discuss. Cause the audio does get tricky as far as recording legality and everything like that.
Yeah.
So yeah, video, when we can do anything with video, the audio gets a little sticky. But, um, yeah, no, I can certainly, uh, revise the quote and send it up to you guys and, and revisit if you got any more questions on that. And, uh, accompany the quote with kind of a diagram of, you know, where the cameras would be positioned and everything, just so you can see on a piece of paper, that's where it's gonna be and.
Sound good to me.
And you're just talking, starting cameras, Steve? Nothing for entries or anything? Cause I, I still wanna go back to the why and I think that's what Ross is kinda getting at is, you know, if we're gonna be spending money, I mean, that's fine, I have no problem with it. But just what is, what is the problem we're trying to solve? And that's what I wanna make sure. If it's a workplace violence type of thing that we're worried about, again, the cameras isn't gonna do us any good. It's gonna be a terrible, terrible movie to watch later. But if it's a physical entry thing, whether we're locking the doors or a key fob or even a buzzer system that can be then recorded, cause you, you know, have ring doorbells, but on a little bit higher method, that's what I guess I'm still wanting to make sure that I don't quite understand what of the scenarios we're trying to cover by what solution.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I just thought we'd have cameras at the hallways and the doors and call it quits and we'd see who comes and goes and we'd see outside what goes on if need be. And I thought that was pretty adequate right now, to start out. I don't, I'm not in favor of going with key locks or cars to open up a door or lock doors or anything. That's really not my forte. If the majority is, they wanna do that, that's fine. But that wasn't my feeling at start now.
So are you concerned with, with the, the general public coming in and having a confrontation or?
I'm concerned about the employees' safety and people coming in if there's something goes on.
Okay.
I don't need, I don't need to hear what's said, I don't, I, I think we, we had it, like I said, where we, we know that, for the safety of something happened, like he just said, you have a fallback to look at. He, he said that it's a great tool to go back and observe if something happens.
Correct.
I don't know if we need to have that thing where we have an immediate response in the system and where, unless the council wants to go that route too. I mean, I don't have a problem with any of the council, majority says they wanna do that. I don't have a problem with that.
And that's what I wanna make sure, cause what, what I, and correct me if I'm wrong, what I just heard from you was that you're wanting to look back if something were to happen, but you're worried about the safety of the employees. In, if, if I'm understanding that correctly, for the safety of employees, I don't wanna look back at what happened later. I wanna prevent the issue from happening first. I don't want anybody to get hurt up front. So to me, then, we would wanna look at some sort of control or access control system. A door lock, a buzzer system, uh, they call man traps toward the double doors up front. You can't get into both unless the one behind you shut. And that's what I wanna make sure I'm understanding from you, is that we're worried about the safety of the employees, which no argument there, versus just general surveillance and monitoring to look back. And, and again, parking lot, if something gets damaged in the parking lot, if the building gets graffitied, I mean, if there's an issue there that we're worried about, then absolutely looking back at it.
I, I'm, I guess what I said is what I said. I'm, I'm not for locking doors and doing something more, but the council will make the decision of which way they wanna go and what they wanna spend. I don't wanna go hog wild, but we'll just, that was my main concern up front, not to get into other kinds of venues along tagged on with the program. I'm, I'm not ready for that. But if somebody wants to put more to it, then we can discuss that.
Cool.
I don't have a problem with that.
It, it doesn't take anything but some time to put some numbers together and at least have a proposal for you guys.
Yeah.
And whether you, yea or nay and then decide.
So currently, we have a, a quote before us, uh, later on in the agenda or not?
No, we do not, no. It was real informal.
Okay, so I guess I would like to see, I would like to see the panic system. A quote.
Okay.
For the buzzers. Um, what do we have? Two stations at Water Works and then the clerk station and, and possibly yours. I mean, would we need any more?
One for the library.
One for the library, so five stations.
Library.
Yeah.
In a situation like this where, uh, maybe the, the desk clerk may not be at the counter in the office, library may not be at the desk, we do have wireless duress buttons. So you can take it with you, put it in your pocket, little lanyard, so.
Right.
Where you're in the building, you'd still have that, that personal protection with you too, so.
Well, I mean, it doesn't hurt to get a quote.
Yep. No, absolutely, I, we can kinda go through the different systems and kinda go through the pros and cons of each one and what they deliver and, and take it from there, so.
Would you come at the next meeting or we just look at what we get from the mayor?
I, I, no, I'd wanna be able to explain everything.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
And then the optional, we did get a optional quote, uh, quote for a keypad, just for this back door.
Okay.
Cause that's the door that people can come in, no one knows that they're here.
Oh, sure.
That's.
Yeah, cut, yeah, the back door really, isn't it? Okay.
Yeah, it's a monitored entryway during the day. Cause we're a library, at least there should be somebody around. And at the front door, of course, there's someone around, but this one, there's nobody here.
And that goes back kinda to the video system. You can have a live display and kinda know, okay, someone who's just up in the front office can see who's, you know, coming in at all the doors and then kinda have that situational awareness without physically being in that, in the area of the building too. So that, that kinda adds to the security of knowing who's in the building to begin with, so.
That's a good thought, too, I never thought of that.
Thank you, Ross.
Absolutely.
I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Ross.
Okay, number nine, request from Richard Marquette to place a guardrail at the curve on Grand Boulevard south of Arbutus. As the pictures that are at your seats tonight, this is not the first time this has happened. You saw the request that was written by Mr. Marquette. This has happened several times, actually. And they were coming, it appeared that they were coming up from River Road, so from the Cedar River area, and, you know, drove into his backyard and continued on forward, getting out of his backyard. Now, Justin said it, it didn't look like, you know, it just looked like they just completely lost where they were at or whatever. But we weren't able to come up with any even pricing on a guardrail, you know. And I guess there, we found out through, Chris found out through the DOT, there's all sorts of different kinds of guardrails, thickness of the posts, thickness of the guardrails, you know, because it's all rated by speed. So it wasn't as easy as we thought even to come up with some kind of idea if we were to entertain that. So I would really like to table this tonight until we can get some more further information. So you'd have information to be, you can give your feedback, though.
Well, and I just wanted to check, Chief Dean, do you have any information, calls for service, property damage or anything tonight for it?
No, no.
Okay.
From my recollection, I think a couple of times it's happened.
Okay. And that's looking at the tire tracks, and this is what I was just referencing, just so that we're on record in the meeting. I was kind of chit-chatting with Jeff and the mayor just before. I'm familiar with the yard and at least from the angle of the pictures, they're, they're in his yard. It didn't appear to me that it was just, I drove off the road a little bit. They're a long ways in his yard. So that would be the other concern is, okay, we put a guardrail, where, how far, is it just on the curve? And then again, we'd need more information, but this specific incident, they perfectly hit all of the ornaments, which are well off the street. So was this a deliberate act? You know, I just, I would have more questions making sure that we have proper information. So yes, I would be in favor in, in fact finding. I definitely want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're addressing the concern. But I, yeah, right away, I don't know if a guardrail is gonna be the fix.
How often has this happened?
Yep, and that was what I just asked Chief Dean.
Maybe we could do cause of service too and-
Yep.
Because he-
Right.
Okay.
And I'm sure people probably go into their yard more than that and not cause any damage. But, I mean, they're, they're on the corner. I mean, I mean, people have ran into my bell box before and I don't ask to put something up because, you know, I want to be protected.
Sure.
I fix the mailbox and I move on.
Yeah, right.
It's part of living on the corner of a street or, you know, like-
Right.
And I'm not trying to downplay it because you don't want children to be hurt, obviously, but-
Right.
The other example I used was the T intersection where we now have a flashing stoplight, all kinds extras, rumble strips, everything is Evansdale Drive at McCoy. People just totally miss that altogether and end up in those poor folks' front yard. I know multiple times beyond what I've heard of this one, again, just with the information I have tonight. But, okay, does that need a guardrail or some sort of protection? And again, that may, they probably hate it as much as it looks gaudy as can be in their front yard, but-
Yeah, I just, I mean, you can, you can't protect the entire city of Evansdale from stupid people. I'm just gonna say it like it is. I'm sorry. I mean, these people might have been drinking a little, but, you know.
Yeah, I'd love to get more information specifically on this. I'm even gonna go back down and double check to make sure what I'm putting together in my mind is where this is sitting at, because this is a long ways in there.
Yeah, I know where, yeah, I know where it's at, because I go down to that area and I'm somewhere official.
Will you reach out to Richard and let him know that it's under discussion?
Yeah. Can I have a motion to table?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, sorry.
Excellent. Go ahead.
I was just a little slow at saying aye.
Oh, okay. No, that's fine. Number 10, approval of the consent agenda, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number eight is approval of the resolution calendar.
Mayor, I'd make an approval. I, I had a question on the bills, but I would make an initial motion approval for sixty-seven twenty-eight.
For the resolution calendar, Councilor Siebel.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I just wanted to know, Mayor, if you could tell us two different, two different things. Is the GPS stuff that we're paying for, are we getting a bang for our buck there instead of just renewing that all the time? I, I need some input from you on that.
Well, I, you know, obviously I do not have time to review that, but I know that Chief Dean does use it. Chief Dean uses it for Elk Run and today there was some question about a particular part of town. And yes, we were available, you know, we could pull that information up readily and tell exactly how long we've been in that area in the last month, for example. But if you'd like to come up to the podium and speak to this?
I've not been a big supporter of this from the beginning.
Right.
Because I feel like we are already covered. And I've said that a few times to the council that we're already covered as it relates to GPS through some of our other systems that we use. You know, with the county and, and we use a track system and stuff like that that, that keeps track of all of our activities and where we're at and whatnot. So I, from the beginning, I said I, I thought this was a waste of money for the city. I still think it's a waste of money for the city. The only thing that we do get out of it is that I'm able to pull up reports. I can send reports, I send reports on a weekly basis over to Elk Run so that they know that they're getting their, what they're paying for. As the mayor alluded to, there was some question about how much time we had been devoting to Deerwood. So I also ran reports of that and learned that we had been providing quite a good amount of time to Deerwood as well, so. In my view, I think it is a waste of money, but I am able to, to go back and pull up those reports.
Are you able to get any of that data from tracks at all?
Um, I probably could. I, I'd have to do some research.
Just not, okay.
I guess my initial concern would be the city vehicles, not necessarily the police. That isn't what I was focusing on with, are we got any benefit out of that, having you, having the ability? I mean, I mean, I thought that, that was the purpose when we originally brought that forward, that there'd be some purpose to it.
I mean, I, I pretty much know where they're at all the time, so.
Well, it's something that may be needed.
I mean, I talk to Chris, how many times a day, Chris?
That's too many.
So we're, but, no, but we're in, he, yeah, he is extremely busy. He and his team and-
Constant communication.
Chris and his team are, but we are constantly in communication because, you know, residents call in. We, you know, address that issues if we can, especially if it's a tree just hanging about, ready to fall on the roadway.
I had heard, I have no way of proving this, I don't know if you're valid, that it saved insurance premium money for the city because we have that on vehicles.
That's what I was gonna ask next. Thanks, Justin.
That was the only thing that I have for my justification. It's like, okay, we've already spent the hardware. Now are we saving the money of what the annual subscription is?
I'd be happy to check into that for you.
Because otherwise, yes, I don't think it's really doing us a whole lot.
So far, I think it's nice that you were able to pull that report.
It is nice to have, it is nice to have those reports, although it was never, well, it was never that the city of Elk Run was demanding it. It was just at our disposal, so I started providing it. I don't think they would, if we were to stop giving those reports, I don't think they would question whether they're still getting their time. I think they trust that they're gonna get it, so.
Well, Chief, if you wouldn't mind checking in tracks?
Yeah.
And, and just see if we have any of that information available? Because it seems like it's a little bit duplication in coverage. As far as the street department goes, I mean, Chris knows where his staff is all day long. And I know where Chris is at, generally speaking, all the time, so.
I'm only speculating, but I think to get the information that you might be looking for with the GPS, it would be something that would require dispatch to give, provide that information to us. Because they can see on their, they can see through that system. Now, the dispatchers can see where we're at exactly at all times, so.
Really? That's pretty cool.
Then my second question is, did we, not you, Chief, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
Did we buy new phones? And I see the prices are higher than what I see monthly on bills?
No.
For the employees?
We had some replacement phones, but that was last month.
Well, and I seen it then, too.
And Waterworks actually upgraded to some hotspots. And we upgraded from hotspots for our ambulance to phones.
To cellphones.
Yeah, to cellphones, because the, the hotspots weren't tracking and giving them the information that they needed. Is that correct?
I, I cannot comment on it.
Okay.
I do not know.
So-
They got switched one day and I was asked to set them back up, so that's what I did.
Okay. We had hotspots for the ambulances, so since then, we have updated from hotspots to regular cellphones. They have a lot more capability on the cellphones and especially if it's a, you know, needing GPS type thing to find the location, because that's gonna be instant, which the hotspots didn't have previous to that. But other than that, it was all discounted price because the replacement, I think the, the most expensive one was forty-nine ninety-nine.
I was just questioning because I seen it's a different deal than what it's been for ages. That's why I asked.
Not Verizon, though.
For phone bills in general.
The phone bill in general.
Well, the phone bill-
The ambulance ones would have gone up. Because the hotspots would have been twenty bucks a month.
Right, exactly. Yeah, now they're forty-one dollars a month. Yep. Exactly.
So I mean, we would have had an increase there, yes.
Yeah, just very slight. The regular phone bill, no, but they, they used to be paid individually every single line in the whole city. And we would get, you know, twenty phone bills a month. And it's combined into one phone bill, no. But that's been for several months and it's been the same price.
Just a question.
Okay. I had an answer.
Yes, you did, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please. Any other questions? I'm sorry. Councilor Siebel, any other questions? Okay.
No, I'd simply stated you had a motion and a second on the floor.
Yeah, roll call.
Roll call it is. Bergman?
Yes.
Siebel?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Smock?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Excellent. Number nine, resolution seventies, sixty-seven thirty-six, approving the purchasing policy. Drumroll, please. I mean, you guys have reviewed that. You'd looked at it quite a bit. We had our attorney go through it and also review it. In all disclosure, this purchasing policy replaces anything that we've had in the past. It replaces any discretionary spending resolution that we've had. It replaces any other purchasing policy, which we've had several in the past. Mostly they were because we needed them for FEMA, when we had FEMA in here. They had, anytime you're dealing with the federal government, you have to have all these certain things in place. That, this purchasing policy also includes the federal piece of that as well, towards the end. I believe the last two pages. Any questions? Is it what you're anticipating? Is it what you were looking for?
Are we there?
Yeah, I think yeah.
My tweaks got made.
Yeah, I like it. I like it.
Okay. Well, then I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution sixty-seven thirty-six on the new and improved purchasing policy update.
I'll second.
Come on, Christie.
I know.
Yeah.
Uh, roll call, please.
Bergman?
Yes.
Siebel?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Smock?
Yes.
Nichols?
Thank you, gentlemen and lady. Number ten, council to consider security options. I believe we can table that to the next meeting when Ross with Hawkeye Alarm brings us more information.
Motion to table until we get quotes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, council to consider city clerk job description. Hopefully, we're ready to move on and for us to post this position.
So Mayor, reviewing through this over the last couple of weeks, everything in red is new and everything that is stroke, stroke, struck out, how do you say that? Everything that's been striked on here has been removed and then, and/or adjusted into another paragraph. Is that correct?
It will be. That was, you know, that was what the city attorney had went through.
Okay. And so through the city attorney, we're not, you know, getting ourselves jammed up in any sort of employment scenarios that's gonna, you know-
Right.
Come back on us.
And that, I, I believe that the one you're looking at right now is actually our current city clerk description.
Yeah.
And the other one that she had sent on to us was from the city, was it Atkins?
At, Atkins. But it's just a reference. So I'm, I'm gonna understand that this is what the new verbiage is supposed to be.
And I was understanding that she was leaning more towards the city of Atkins.
Uh-huh.
The only question I had, Mayor, I mean, I did look these over in quite length. Why are we, I don't go along with taking out the, appointed and working under the direction of the city council pursuant to chapter eighteen. It's always been that way?
Oh, that's not gonna change.
That's gonna stay in.
Yeah, that's Iowa code.
It's, it's-
It moved up to reports to. That's what I'm, that's what I'm alluding to.
Yeah.
You have, you have this strikeout, but it's actually up in a different paragraph, the paragraph above that reports to.
I see in the top sentence of that whole paragraph.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I'm, I'm understanding that this is the revised with all the new stuff on it.
Yes, that is our current city clerk job description revised by our city attorney.
Okay.
So the Atkins one's out. This is actually what we, we've read and we want to go with.
That's my understanding of it.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah.
Any other feedback?
I, I, one, this might not be the time, but I read it over. It's pretty thorough. It's pretty detailed. Question for the council to think about in the future, when we have the prime candidate that comes around, pay is gonna be a big deal. And I'm very concerned about that right now. We get somebody that's, the mayor would make this decision, look, talking, but if we get somebody that has experience and they, I think we struggled with what was being paid to the city clerk in the past. And then we got all these entities that are mixed in with that as well as the city clerk. So I think the council needs to really take a serious look at this and decide what's gonna be your thinking on pay and stuff. When it, do we gotta perform a bonus thing, sign on like we did the police? Or do we gotta have some kind of option to make it more attractive? Because what I heard when that stuff was going, we were talking sixty, seventy thousand dollars for city clerk that's trained that came in here and interviewed. I don't know if we can support a seventy thousand dollar city clerk. So I'm just, I'm just putting it out there for the council to think. I mean, I, I'm not gonna go into people's pay, but I think it's something we need to really take it serious, take some time, really think about it, because when that comes up, that's part of the interview process. What's your pay scale?
Our last city clerk, if I remember the deal it was gone through, there was a incentive of about, was it two thousand a year?
It, it was actually, it was actually a two thousand dollar increase when she finished her schooling.
City clerk license, sure.
Was certified, yep.
Yep, so that we kind of worked out initially.
Which we found out later was four years out.
Yeah.
We didn't realize it was gonna be that far out.
They would never get that.
I didn't, you know, it was that detailed.
It's a five-year program.
Our certain, yeah, so our previous city clerk did not.
It's a four-year program. It really is.
And it was, the initial conversations, not to get too sidetracked, but the initial conversations that was given to us was that that could be reobtained within like a year. So it was something where we wanted to make it achievable. It was definitely not something we tried to do and then, oh, you know, in ten years, you'll get a raise. Well, no, it was something that we thought could be done to incentivize them to get it done within twelve months.
Yeah.
But that was just something, like you said, Steve, whether it's a bonus or anything, we, we absolutely tried to take that into account. And then what was the, was it forty-eight starting? And then with the two thousand, would have put them about fifty? So just to kind of give you a ballpark of where we were, was ultimately landing right about fifty thousand.
And then something else I think we ought to think about of the pay too is if we're gonna send them to school to get trained or finish getting trained or whatever, we ought to have some program like the police where they pay back. If they're here so long, they're gonna pay back. When they, the longevity kicks into where they don't pay as much back, because we've had things go on where they get trained, they go somewhere else. We paid for the training totally.
So I will take part of that as well. Steve, you are a hundred percent correct. I will back that till I'm blue in the face as well for any one of our city departments. If we are providing training for you to go to on our dime, we expect service in return.
Yeah.
I think it's a fair deal. Now, it should be prorated properly for a five hundred dollar class. I don't think you owe us five years of your life.
Right.
Versus a ten thousand dollar class. But that actually was something that was supposed to be set for the city clerk, the previous one. And come to find out, it very well could have been on me. The ball got dropped and the actual signature, the document was drawn up, the actual signature was never obtained. So it was discussed. We thought we had it. And unfortunately, when we went back to find it, we did not have a signature. But yes, you were a hundred percent, Steve, that is- we did not have a signature, but yes, you are a hundred percent, Steve, that is something that I think, in the organization, period, if we're going to provide training, then you owe us the service, or you then pay it back, you know, if you exit before that term.
But right now, we just need to focus on the job description.
Yeah, that's exactly.
What's before us, motion before us is the description verbiage itself, and then we can look at pay, concurate with experience in setting all that on another.
The only thing I had, and I know it's been mentioned in or out of the job description, because again, it can go back, is do we want it exempt or not exempt? So I mean, that's still down to whether it's hourly or salary.
We need to go hourly, I thought we'd been advised.
We were going to go with hourly, aren't we?
Correct issue.
Pretty sure we were going with hourly.
And that is the only thing, because again, is how, that was my main question tonight, is the job description I'm good with?
That's why we're just doing that job description today, and we'll figure out the pay.
I believe, I, I believe, oh, no, not this one, the job description, oh, it says exempt.
Yep, which is pay status.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that's where I wanted to make sure that that was stated, if we're good for this, right now, it's exempt means there's salary.
We want to be non-exempt, then.
Non-exempt, non-exempt.
So we can change that?
We can change that.
I mean, this is just the job description that Dean is going to put out, or the mayor is going to put out, just to get the job out there, so let's...
And we should have, you know, really, actually, we should have a starting wage as well.
Or a range.
Or a range. It, it can be, you know, it could be salary starting at, you know, through, you know, concurate upon experience.
I would like to see some pay scales, even if they are salaried pay scales with similar populations of towns.
I think that's a good idea, to set pay scales, but we can, when we post it, we can just say salary based on experience, so that we can...
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
And then, as long as we're all...
So now we have, we have something to throw out there, but then we can work on that before we get somewhere.
Yeah, I like that idea.
And you really, and, and, you know, and I can just give you a, a couple of examples, I know that the city clerk of Dunkerton is making around thirty-two dollars an hour. The city clerk of Gilbertville, now, I, I hope you understand how small these cities are, Dunkerton, I think, population is somewhere around eight hundred and fifty, Gilbertville is probably around seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty-four.
And, and it's good for those numbers, but I'd like to see something that's closer to our population.
How many hours did it work?
Yeah, but I'm telling you, they're making a lot more money than...
Yeah.
Like, you're talking six dollars more an hour in Dunkerton, and the city clerk in Gilbertville is making sixty-six thousand a year.
That's why I brought up what I brought up earlier.
Really, really, really low. Yep.
And if we can get somebody in here with a four-year degree that's certified city clerk, then we can definitely discuss that wage.
Yeah, absolutely.
There you go.
The problem is getting somebody who's certified.
But yes, I would encourage and kind of semi-selfishly ask that we get something posted, please.
Yes.
Right away.
Please.
Well, I don't have any problems with, if this is truly the, the new job description, reading through it, so, I mean...
You're going to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, and the motion is to...
To approve the new verbiage.
To approve the city of Evansdale's job description, this has been revised by our city attorney.
Yes.
All in favor, please?
As non-exempt.
As non-exempt.
Does that got to be in the reading?
I don't know.
I, I've got it down here.
All right, we'll add that now.
And, and I'll just state this to make it clear to everybody, in hourly position.
Thank you.
And I'll take a...
You have a motion and a second on the floor.
A second, and so it's just all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Awesome, excellent, moving forward.
But can I just ask a quick question on that?
Yeah.
Before, I mean, this is just to post it, right? So before we offer anything to the city, to somebody, we will have the wages, the pay scale in place to determine what we will be offering, and we'll discuss it before we draw any numbers to anybody, correct?
That is, um...
That'd be something to do.
That was, be personnel committee.
Yeah.
I can confirm that with our city attorney, because right now, it's personnel committee.
I know I can speak.
And obviously, it comes to council for...
Yeah, so...
Yeah, we need to set the wages, and before the personnel committee says anything to a potential applicant.
Mayor, when I asked the attorney that night, the council should be involved in this, she said, yes, you most all should be involved.
So I can give, without even having to mess with attorney fees or anything, I can at least answer for fifty percent of the personnel committee, Jeff being my counterpart. Absolutely, I will, because of the sensitivity that we've gone through, or anything, we may interview, we may bring candidates forward, we may even ask for different second interviews, again, no more than two of us together, obviously, at a time, but it is something, then, that we can try to discuss outside of a quorum to try to get input on as well.
Great idea.
You have my word on that.
Yep, for sure.
Excellent. Any other questions, just regarding the city clerk job description?
I hope somebody comes out of the woodwork.
Me, too. Number twelve, ordinance six ninety-three, approving electric franchise agreement with Mid-American Energy, second reading.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bergman?
Yes.
Siebel?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Smock?
Yes.
Nichols?
Thirteen, ordinance six ninety-four, approving gas franchise agreement with Mid-American Energy, second reading.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bergman?
Yes.
Siebel?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Smock?
Yes.
Nichols?
Excellent. Number fourteen, mayor council reports, the only thing I had to state tonight is the twenty-twelve Tahoe will be placed on website and Facebook this week, with bid opening to be held on August first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Mayor.
And all the necessary equipment has been removed?
Okay, so that may not happen.
Yeah, don't have it happen until it's removed.
I think we left it at Sergeant Newman was going to get pricing from the tube, so please follow up, and then I'll follow up with council, so it may not be on the next agenda.
Well, we could still list it and just put pending removal of stuff on it.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we don't want to, we don't want to get jammed up in this last one, where someone thought that they were going to get all the specialized equipment.
Right, right, it should be stripped and down here, be able to look at it and see the bids.
Is that way we can do it?
Yeah, I'm going to find out where we're in the process of that tomorrow from Chief Dean, and then...
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, absolutely, council.